There's Commissioner Jones.
They're all, everybody's on.
Everyone's on, great. All right, Commissioners, it's seven o'clock, so I'll bring us back to order for our evening meeting tonight, so we'll get started as we typically do with a moment of silence and then a pledge of allegiance before roll call. So if you'd join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, and I'm gonna stand, I have a flag behind me, so pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. All right, next we'll do the roll call.
Commissioner Lanier. Commissioner Esasi. Commissioner O'Connor. Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Ruppert.
Here.
And Mayor Bliss.
Yes. All right, and next we introduce our interpreter tonight, and again, we're joined by Lilabeth Perez, so I'll hand it over to her.
Thank you, Mayor Bliss. Good evening, everyone. If you need interpretation services in order to address the City Commission, I will be able to assist.
Thank you. All right, so as we get started tonight, we have our first opportunity for public comment, so if you want to comment on anything that is on our agenda that we are voting on tonight, I'm gonna ask you to call in. You can call into 311 or 456-3000. And when you get to the, to the prompt, you will press one, and then after you press one, you'll have four options. So if you want to speak at the beginning right now on items that we're voting on tonight, you can press one, or option one. And then we have two scheduled public hearings tonight. So we have a scheduled public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 service provision fees that will go into effect, effect on July 1. So if you want to speak to those, when you call in, press one and then hit option two. If you want to call in and, and speak about the Downtown Improvement District Special Assessment Rule 8748, when you call in, again, that's 311 or 456-3000, first press one and then press option three. And then at the end of the evening is when we have public comment on any other issue. So same rules apply, you can call 311 or 456-3000, press one and then hit option four. And what that does is it will put you in a queue to be heard, and then when it's time to be heard, we'll open that up. We ask you to share your name and the city that you live in, and then you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. So I'm gonna go ahead and open up the first opportunity for public comment tonight. Again, this is on items that we're voting on, so if you have the agenda in front of you, we do have that online electronically. There's a whole list of items that the City Commission discussed earlier and voted on. So at this first public comment period, we just ask you to share what item you're speaking to. So if it's Committee of the Whole, item number two, we ask you that you specify that so that we can look that up and that we know what you're referring to. So with that, I'll open up our first opportunity for public comment, and I'll turn to our city clerk to let me know if there is anyone in the queue.
All right, Daniel, what do we have?
We have one caller in the queue. Here they come. Two callers, pardon me.
Great, thanks.
Good evening, caller, you're on with the City Commission, you have three minutes, your time starts now.
Dr. Raeann Booker, Grand Rapids. I am a member of the Grand Rapids African American Community Task Force, where we seek your demonstrated support for improving the outcomes of African American children, youth, and adults through our Grand Rapids Quality of Life Initiative. COVID-19 has unmasked longstanding disparities driven by socioeconomic and environmental factors, as well as the large disparities in resource allocation that perpetuate poverty, racism, and despair. In response to racial disparities highlighted by COVID-19, there is aversioning of statewide, countywide, and citywide efforts. We also find local businesses and organizations rallying to impact needed change. Along with the important work of these larger systems and organizations, grassroots efforts like neighborhood associations are more important now than ever, and can help position African American communities for greater success. As a lifelong resident of Grand Rapids, I grew up on the 700 block of Delaware Street Southeast, which was and still is an absolutely beautiful neighborhood. Yet, in the midst of all that was good about my neighborhood, white flights were center stage, gangs were active, homeownership was lessened by renting, and blue collar workers were challenged by the dwindling manufacturing industry and the emergent digital world. On Delaware and the surrounding streets, the neighborhood associations were a source of community pride and a reminder of the resiliency of our neighborhood and its deserving residents. Paul I. Phillips Neighborhood Association, Madison Area Neighborhood Association, Southeast Community Association. The neighborhood association staff and programs were consistently and visibly present, providing culturally relevant services and resources. The neighborhood associations filled an important gap by bridging our Delaware neighborhood with the many organizations that purportedly had our best interests in mind, but often did not have authentic relationships with the African American community. Through the CDBG grant program, I request your commitment to building the capacity of neighborhood associations specifically located in the 49507, 03, and 06 zip codes. In doing so, you further demonstrate your commitment to the quality of life of African American children, youth, and adults in Grand Rapids.
Thank you, Dr. Booker.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Daniel, you said we had a second caller in the queue?
One more caller, yes ma'am. Caller, you're live with the City Commission, you have three minutes, your time starts now.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Staff. My name's Rodney Brown, I'm representing the Grand Rapids African American Community Task Force, here today speaking to your agenda item from the Committee of the Whole, Point 12, your approved funding for CDBG. I'm here today to remind the Commission about the inequities and disparities that exist in the city of Grand Rapids related to the funding opportunities from the Community Development Block Grant Fund, particularly for the neighborhood associations that are in the most dispossessed areas of Grand Rapids, particularly the zip codes of 49503 and 49507. As you may have seen, a May 1st M Live article headline, New Kent County Zip Code Coronavirus Tracking, Soaks Highest Totals in Central Grand Rapids. Article goes on to say that the new data released by the Kent County Health Department shows coronavirus cases by zip code with the highest case totals in central and southeast Grand Rapids. Those are in the area codes of 49503 and 49507. Now, let's not miss words here, Commissioners, and Mayor, and City Staff. These central Grand Rapids neighborhoods are where the majority of Black people and Brown people or Latinx communities live in our city. Thus, the African American Community Task Force is looking for full funding from the Community Development Block Grant for neighborhood associations that have been systemically locked out of money and opportunities to serve the residents with intentionality in the African American and Latinx communities. So in our advocating for the Quality of Life Initiative, we're asking that the city honor its words and its efforts at being fair and equitable, and being forthright and responsive to the COVID-19 pandemic, particularly as it relates to race and issues of race in Grand Rapids. We expect that our City Commission and our mayor and our staff will be intentional to continue to work to eliminate racism and its effects in the city of Grand Rapids. We believe that, most importantly, these neighborhood associations, as mentioned by the first caller, that thus encompass many of the areas of southeast and southwest Grand Rapids are deserving of CDBG money, particularly in order to help our community address this pandemic. Thank you all kindly, have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, Daniel, is there anyone else in the queue?
There are no more callers, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and close that opportunity for public comment, and we'll move to our next item, and that is approval of our minutes from our April 28th regular session and our May 5th special session. Can I get a motion, Commissioners? Support. All right, moved and supported. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, I'll turn to our city clerk to do the vote.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Esasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, next that will take us to petitions and communications, and we have four items tonight.
The first one is a communication received from the Empower the Citizens regarding even year elections and August primary proposals.
That is received and filed.
A communication received from Ryan Wheeler, President of Wheeler Development Group, expressing support for the continuation of the Downtown Improvement District Special Assessment.
That's received and filed.
Communication received from Mike Maraz, President of Real Estate Development at Rockford Construction, expressing support for the continuation of the Downtown Improvement District Special Assessment.
That's received and filed.
And communication received from Sam Cummings, Managing Partner at CWD Real Estate Investment, expressing support for the continuation of the Downtown Improvement District Special Assessment.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to reports of city officers.
The first one is Comptroller's Report for the period of April 16, 2020, through April 28, 2020, in the amount of $16,264,444.73.
That's received and filed.
And Treasurer's Report for the period of April 14, 2020, through April 24, 2020.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to our consent agenda and reports from our standing committees. So for, for those of you watching, the consent agenda consists of items that we discussed this morning at one of our meetings, and when we voted on them, they were voted on unanimously. So tonight, with one vote, we'll adopt those items. So can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Some move.
Some move.
Thank you, moved and supported. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, I'll turn to our city clerk to call the vote.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Esasi?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. And Commissioners, we have one item removed from consent tonight, and that is because we have a colleague that needs to abstain, so we'll move forward with the next item, which is a resolution approving fiscal year 2021 Emergency Solutions Grants. Can I get a motion?
Some move.
All right, we have support?
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner Esasi, you want to tell us about this?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. This is an item from earlier today, it was removed from consent because we had one abstention of Commissioner Jones. So this is adoption of the 2020 Emergency Solutions Grant Funding and the submission of our documents and agreement to HUD, and so it's for a total of $324,988, and that's about it.
Okay, great, thank you so much. So Commissioners, any questions or comments on that? All right, I'll turn to the city clerk to call the question.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Esasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes.
Are there any abstentions?
I abstained.
All right, that carries. All right.
Well, Mayor, we've lost you a minute.
Oh.
There you go.
My back, all right. So we have no ordinances to be adopted, and we don't have any City Commission resolutions, so that'll take us to our scheduled public hearings, and we have two scheduled public hearings tonight. So I'll start with the very first one, and this is a public hearing considering fiscal year 2021 service provision fees that will be effective on July 1, 2020. So what I'll do is I'll turn this first to our CFO, Ms. Molly Clearan, and she can provide us with some information, and then we'll open it up to see if we have anyone in the queue who would like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. This schedule was introduced at our last meeting, tonight's the public hearing. These rates are due to go into effect July 1. They've been generated in accordance with our budget formulation. The attached schedule shows the adopted fee from 2020, and then the proposed fee for 2021, and then it indicates the, you know, the, if it pays for the service or not, the, the revenue recovery associated with it. You'll see the percentage, or if it's below the cost of the service being provided, or how that falls. The increases account for roughly $530,000. I would say a little over 90% of that is accounted for with the increases to the refuse items.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any, any questions? All right, seeing none, let's see if there's anyone in the queue who would like to speak on this item.
There are no callers for this item.
Okay.
You want to give the, sorry, Mayor, can you give the introduction just to see if anybody gets in? I'd like to give them a moment.
Yep, so if you want to be heard tonight and speak to the service provision fees, you can call 311 or 456-3000, and you, when you call in, if you press one and then press option two, that will queue you up for this public hearing. If you want to be heard on the next public hearing, that would be option three, and if you want to be heard on any other item, that's option four.
There are still no callers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, then I'll go ahead and close that public hearing that we referred back to the Committee of the Whole. That will take us to our second item, this is a public hearing on recommendations of the Downtown Improvement District Board and hearing for, on the necessity for a special assessment, and this is Roll 8748. So tonight, to tee this up, I believe I have Mr. Tim Kelly, oh, there he is, from, he's the president and CEO of Downtown Grand Rapids, Inc., so I'll give him an opportunity to give us a little background on this. Again, if you are watching and you want to be heard on this public hearing, you can call 311 or 456-3000, press one, and then press number three. So to tee us off, I'll turn it to Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor Bliss. Good evening, Commissioners. So this item, item was introduced back at the April 14 meeting. Just a quick reminder, our current five-year authorization for the Downtown Improvement District concludes on June 30. So we are seeking a one-year continuation of the Improvement District, and in light of the ongoing situation with COVID-19, there are no proposed changes in rates or boundaries for FY '21. The plan that was included in your agenda packet this evening was developed in collaboration both with our Steering Committee, as well as our Downtown Improvement District Board. Both have recommended it for your approval. As required by law, notices for the hearing were distributed via first-class mail. We're also published, notice was also published in the Grand Rapids Press. In addition to the committee and board endorsement, as you heard this evening, we also received three letters of support from ratepayers, those are included in the packet. I did also just want to clarify, these scheduled billings for this year were pushed back to October 1. So historically, the, the, did billings have gone out August 1, and we were able to push those back to October 1. And then lastly, following this evening's public hearing, we'd seek your approval on the resolution of necessity at your meeting on May 19.
Great, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Commissioners, any questions for Tim? All right, seeing none, let's see if we have anyone in the queue. Again, if you are watching and you want to be heard on this item, you can call 311 or 456-3000, and you press number one, and then option number three.
No callers in the queue for this item, Mayor.
All right, why don't we hold off just for a few seconds to see if anyone calls in? Has anyone called in, Daniel?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing, and that will be referred back to our Committee of the Whole. Mr. Kelly, thanks for joining us tonight, and thanks for all your work. We appreciate your partnership.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see you all.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so this will take us to our last opportunity for public comment, our final public hearing tonight. So I'll turn to Daniel to see if we have anyone in the queue. Again, if you want to call in on any other item, you can call 311 or 456-3000. Again, if you want to call in on any other item, you can call 311 or 456-3000. You can press number 1 and then option number 4.
We have one caller, Mayor.
All right, let's go ahead and let them speak.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, city officials. My name is Tiny Jordan, and I'm calling to address the inequity and disparity that exists in the city of Grand Rapids when it comes to funding opportunities. I'd like to speak towards specifically the neighborhood association. So I know for me, for my business on Granville Avenue, had it not been for the neighborhood association, I may not be a business owner at this time. They were very resourceful in assisting me and my husband with purchasing the building and with also building our business. We have a great relationship with the Roosevelt Park Neighborhood Association, and I can't help but wonder what happened on Wealthy Street? Was there no neighborhood associations to assist Black people who wanted to start a business? I just wonder if it would look and feel different right now had there been neighborhood associations to assist minority, Black women, Black men that desire to become business owners? I think we need to have more of an understanding of what is happening here, and I'm hoping that our city officials can assist us with this. We're asking, as the African American Task Force, we are really looking towards working towards the Quality of Life Initiative with the city of Grand Rapids. This is an effort that has been underway for over a year. I know I've been on the ground doing grassroots work to no avail, and I'm really becoming tired and weary moving forward in these efforts, and that should not be. We should see some movement. I do understand that, you know, there's a saying out there that, you know, you're seeing the needle move, and I'm just trying to understand what music you're listening to as you hear this needle move. But I'm not hearing it. I don't know what tune you're dancing to, but I can't catch the rhythm because it's been a skip-repe for a long time. So we're asking for real change, systemic change, and we're here to walk it out with you. So we're asking for your support with our neighborhood associations all over the city, not just in certain areas. We want them where, we want them in the area where Blacks live. We're hoping that you can assist us with this effort. We're asking for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. All right, Daniel, is there anyone else in the queue?
We have one more caller, Mayor.
Great, thanks.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, Commissioners, and City Staff. This is Victor Williams, calling from African American Community Task Force and as the President of Boston Square Neighborhood Association. A while ago, we introduced Quality of Life Initiative. The Quality of Life Initiative was in hopes to prepare us to be responsive to conditions such as COVID-19, to help us build our capacity in the city of Grand Rapids for grassroots organizations that appear to have been locked out of being involved in what's going on in the city at this time. We'd like to take this moment to remind the City Commission and everyone listening about the inequities and disparities that exist in the city of Grand Rapids when it's related to funding opportunities through the CDBG fund for neighborhood associations and grassroots organizations in the most dispossessed areas of the city, 49507, 49503 of Grand Rapids, Michigan. It appears that race is a factor. The African American Community Task Force is looking for full funding for neighborhood associations that have been systematically locked out of CDBG funding, Martin Luther King, Sika, Boston Square. We are looking for enhanced support, funding, and resources for grassroots organizations in our city's neighborhoods that specifically and intentionally serve the African American community of Grand Rapids, Michigan. We would really like to be on the ground, prepared right now, assist in all efforts with COVID-19 and this pandemic, but because we have been shut out, we really have our hands tied when it comes to assisting our residents and our communities at this time. We would really like for the city officials, the mayor, city manager, elected officials to take this into consideration, that you have three strong neighborhood associations on the ground that are currently not receiving the support from the city, and we'd like to be fully funded and supported in the efforts, specifically right now with COVID-19, but COVID-19 and beyond, to do what's best by our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. All right, Daniel, is there anyone else in the queue?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close that opportunity for public comment then, and I will turn to my colleagues on the Commission, and we'll start tonight with Mr. Commissioner O'Connor.
O'Connor, Mayor.
All right, Commissioner Jones?
Thanks, Mayor. I want to thank all of the callers and those who were viewing this evening, and I just want to also thank City Staff for their continuous work in providing information in a very informative manner by way of the budget workshops. Very appreciative of that. Want to continue to give a shout out to all the folks on the front lines in healthcare here locally in West Michigan, as well as the essential workforce in our beloved city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Ruppert?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank the staff, City Manager, for getting us this far in the budget conversation, and I do hope that people will take a look at the proposed budget and weigh in next week and let us know their thoughts about things that are important to them, and just grateful for all the work of everybody at the city right now. And enjoy this beautiful evening, everyone.
Thanks. Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Esasi?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo my thanks, as my colleagues have done, and as I sit here in my living room, what a difference a year makes because I was doing something very different last year, and the point of personal privilege is my niece's birthday. So anyways, I just had to say that, and, you know, I reflect on that, not only for that personal point, but really thinking about how we build out our community for our young people and recognizing that, you know, I saw some comments about the things that we're doing, and I'm just really grateful for the community for joining us and understanding that these decisions about closing pools or other things that we look forward to and sort of, you know, the kickoff to summer, that we don't do these, you know, lightly, that we think about them, and really, at the end of the day, want to protect them and make sure that they're cared for. So I've received a couple of messages from people who are saying that they're disappointed about what the summer's going to look like in our city, but they also recognize what we need to do to stay safe, staying safe. So while, you know, I look in at 7:28, and we, you know, we're not in the chambers and having a lot of public comment, I think people are reaching out in different ways, so I would encourage the public to keep on doing that. If being on a meeting at 7 o'clock isn't going to work for you, send us a message, reach out to us, and connect. And, you know, just lastly, we got an update, too, about where we're at with our census numbers, and we're seeing other billboards around town. Miss Stout is on a billboard, I believe, in the 3rd Ward, so if you haven't seen that, it's just a reminder that we still need to do all of that and to push for that percentage that we want to see to make sure that we receive those needed funds here in our community. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good reminder. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo my colleagues as well, but I wanted to say thank you to you and the City Manager and the City Staff for all the work that you put in, beginning with our strategic plan all the way to our budget, and for the things that we are planning during this COVID-19. I thank all the callers for calling in. I know that the city is doing everything within its grip and its power to make sure that we have a wholesome city, that everybody has an equal opportunity to progress and grow. With that, thank you to everybody for tonight. Have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lanier?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager and staff, for the presentations today, and thank you to the City Clerk and his team for making sure that we're staying connected during this time of isolation in our homes. I just wanted to thank the callers who called, and I support your call for supporting neighborhood associations during our mitty discussion regarding the CDBG funding. I specifically talked about the newer neighborhood associations that have come on the scene and encouraged staff to reach out to those neighborhood associations, as I have already done, and had conversations about making sure that they apply for funding so that they could be considered the next round of funding for neighborhood associations. And I'd like to also thank Commissioner Jones, or Tyler Perry, as I'm calling him, for his PSA work in the Urban League. He was the writer, producer, star, and everything else of his PSA. So thank you, Commissioner Jones, for your work. It was a really good piece. And then I'll agree with Commissioner Ruppert, enjoy this evening, like he apparently is outdoors, and his mama bird, who's feeding her baby birds in this nest outside of my window. Have a great evening.
Nice. Thank you, Commissioner. City Attorney, anything tonight?
Thank you.
All right. City Clerk?
Nothing for me.
All right, City Manager, anything for you?
Yes, Mayor, real quickly, I want to thank you and the Commissioners for your indulgence today and patient with us as we work through the various aspects of our budget and the technology. I think we remedied some of the issues this evening, so thank you for your patience. I also want to appreciate those who were part of the military flyover today, and those who were out in observance of our essential workers, our frontline workers, and healthcare, and first responders. Thank you for your continued work, particularly for those of you who are city employees. I really, really appreciate the work that you're doing as we balance everything that we're going through right now. I'd also like to congratulate and announce Mr. Brandon Davis's appointment as the Director of Oversight and Public Accountability. We went through a very competitive process with public participation in the, at least public observation, rather, town hall, and participation, and a very competitive process. Want to thank all the finalists for their participation in that. It was very competitive, but we want to congratulate and acknowledge Mr. Davis's selection. I know that he will do an outstanding job for our organization and community. And finally, for those callers who called in, just as a follow-up, I just want to acknowledge, in addition to the issues that the city is responsible for, we did forward the concerns about COVID-19 and the public health aspect of the response to the county for their consideration as well. So we continue to focus and work with them in collaboration on that, but also, as we talk about economic recovery and resilience, we will continue to be mindful of recovery for everyone. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. Commissioners, I'll add with, I'll end with just a few items. One, congratulations to Mr. Davis. Thank you to our City Manager and our leadership team for all their work on the budget. Commissioner Esasi, I've heard some of the similar concerns about this summer and opportunities for youth. I'll share with you one thing that I'm eager to see move forward, and that is still planning to move forward, and that is the Promise Scholarship, so serving on the Promise Zone Authority. I can assure you that the board continues to meet, and we're actively raising private dollars so that we can have hundreds of young people from our city who are graduating right now as seniors be able to go to GRCC on a full scholarship. So that's a wonderful thing for our community that's still moving forward despite COVID. I also want to let everyone know, and I'm pretty sure I've talked to all of you, but if you're watching this tonight, you're welcome to join us in this effort and advocacy. At the, in Washington, DC, another relief package is being discussed, and part of that would be direct support for cities who are experiencing significant revenue shortfalls because of COVID. There is a bill that the House is moving forward that would provide direct support for cities. We are advocating for that as a city, but also, we're partnering with Michigan National League of Cities and the U.S. Conference of Mayors to make sure that there is support for cities so that cities can continue to provide essential services and not have to cut. So if you want to reach out to your U.S. Senators or Congressmen, I encourage you to do that. We're hopeful that that will be passed within the next week. And then last, I echo what Commissioner Lanier said. Thank you, Urban League, for the PSA. And as we close tonight, I want to encourage everyone to continue to be mindful of the medical precautions. If you're out and about, you know, if you're in a store, wear a mask, keep your social distance, and let's do all that we can to continue to protect one another and protect our community. So with that, Commissioners, I hope you have a wonderful night, enjoy that sunshine, which I know some of you already are, and we'll look forward to getting back together next week. Twice we're together next week, both on Tuesday and on Thursday, as we hopefully finish up this year's budget. And with that, I will adjourn. Thank you.